Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment. However, this morning we have no registered speakers. Therefore, we will move directly into our Standing Committee agenda. And would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson. Mr. LaValle Chair.
Here.
Four members present. We don't have a quorum.
I see Reverend Burgess with us.
Yeah.
Here. I couldn't turn my, I couldn't get my, I couldn't get to the, um.
Oh Reverend.
Couldn't unmute fast enough.
Five members present.
Don't kick us out the meeting.
All right. Thank you. Uh, our first committee of the day is Finance and Law chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill fifteen-eighty-eight.
Bill fifteen-eighty-eight Resolution transferring a total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars within the two thousand and twenty-one operated budget from the Department of Public Works to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purposes of increasing pay for lifeguards and reopening as many pools as possible for the two thousand and twenty-one season.
Motion to approve a discussion.
Second.
All right. Hi, my computer's being really sluggish today. I'm sorry. Like a few seconds slow on everything. So I'm, um, just like last week, I think I'm looking for Madam President. Is she on the call yet? Isn't I meeting at? So I am probably gonna end up holding this bill, um, simply because as we heard last week that Parks and Recreation actually has extra dollars because there aren't, there are twenty pools that haven't opened. Right? And so we've already been working with the directors and the, the summer staff and we really appreciate all their input and they have, I want to say this, increased some of the pay scales. We are joined by Ms. Vargas there is nodding. Thank you. And we're encouraged by that. And we've learned quite a few things. As you heard me say last week, I think that we need to look at pay scales for all of our non-salaried workers. Um, and we realize that right now, uh, we, uh, there may be some concern among the non-salaried workers that those pay scales become uneven um, and unfair, and we don't want that. Um, so I am going to be pursuing, um, what is a fair wage across all of these non-salaried workers across the city. And I hope that I have council support on for that conversation. I think it's long overdue. But then secondly, what about the pools? Right? So Councilwoman Smith convened a meeting that we just had late yesterday. And to, um, I think it's heartwarming to, to see that we have some partners outside the city willing to work to make their pools available to our city families. Um, and so I want to thank them for that willingness. So yesterday, Madam Smith, um, I was gonna let her tell the story, but she's not here. Um, Madam President convened a meeting with some, the Pittsburgh Public Schools, who have pools, um, that will be open this summer and that are in service as well as, um, members of representatives from the Port Authority, uh, which she mentioned last week, um, decades ago, used to provide services shuttles to connect neighborhoods to recreational assets. So, uh, that is incredibly encouraging news that the Port Authority also will be looking to see if it's, if they can add shuttles in there willingly, um, and looking at that work for the summer. And then thirdly, there was also some representatives from our local philanthropic foundation community. And that's good news as well because if we have partner organizations providing expanded service, they most likely will have expanded costs. Um, and so we may have some outside partnership to cover some of those costs. Um, just to, before I allow Ms. Vargas to, to join us, I, um, I wanna give a shout out to the administration who were helpful in pulling together all the outside partners. Um, we had Chief Casey and Chief Gilman um, in the meeting as well. And, um, also, uh, my staff was able to come up with a list of every single pool in operation in the city of Pittsburgh. So I wanted to give them credit for that. So they pulled a comprehensive list off of the Allegheny County Health Department because the Health Department issues the permits for you to have an operating pool. So we have a list of over one hundred pools. Uh, there are pools in hotels. There are pools at apartment buildings. There are pools at nonprofit recreation centers, kind of, you know, things like the Kingsley Association, who's been a longtime partner with the city and, and we have had cooperative agreements with the Kingsley Association in the past. So, you know, nonprofit things like the Boys and Girls Clubs, et cetera, that have, um, pools as well. So we were able to look through that list. And one thing that really, um, jumped out is the number of pools at local universities. So Pittsburgh is kind of well, unusual in the number of colleges and universities that are inside the city limits. And they have pool facilities as well. And so our next step is going to be reaching out to those universities and colleges. Um, so I'll allow, um, Ms. Vargas to join us. Would you have, would you introduce yourself and, and add anything? If you have something to add?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, my name's Catherine Vargas. I'm the Assistant Director for Community Recreation, uh, Parks and Recs Department. And really I want to first extend a big thank you, um, to both you Councilwoman, um, Gross and Councilwoman Kale Smith, um, for, uh, you know, your leadership on, on working with us through this really tough summer. Um, it's really encouraging to hear what you just described around partnership. I think that sounds, um, amazing. And I think it's something that, you know, our, our department would be interested in, in, you know, making sure that anything we can do to, to help be a partner in that as well. Um, and I also wanted to reiterate that, um, you know, we have been able to, um, over the last two weeks since this, um, conversation has begun, um, we raised the, um, the wage for an experienced guard, which we're still recruiting for, um, from eleven eighty to fourteen dollars. Um, and we have seen an uptick. We were doing some, um, uh, what's our training and, uh, certifications this past weekend, um, and have a couple more guards joining the team. Um, you know, we're gonna continue to do that for the next several weeks to see what that yields um, and see what that means for us this summer. Um, either way, it is a huge help and absolutely necessary for the current pools we have, but then, you know, for, um, even just being able to do this again, you know, in the future. And so what I'll say is we've been able to do that. We've also are putting the finishing touches on an incentive plan to make sure we can retain our guards through the entire season. It's also gonna augment pay. And just to reiterate that, you know, the longer term solution here, to be able to do this in future years and to also be able to, um, to be able to, you know, serve all of our seasonal staff, uh, with, um, a wage that's, um, you know, competitive and sustainable, um, that will take, you know, some partnership, um, in the future. And we have had conversations already with the Budget Office around proposing those increases, you know, in our upcoming budget, um, budget season as well. So we thank you for, again, for highlighting this, um, and for, and for your support.
Thank you. Um, I think that's, I, I really appreciate, uh, the Parks and Recs Department's, uh, willingness to answer all of our questions, help us understand the complexities of the challenges that you're facing, um, so that we can help solve some of the problems. We all are, um, aligned in wanting our kids to have safe outdoor recreation options this summer. And it's, we, um, I know are, you know, worried about how many pools had to close. And I know it was really hard for Parks and Rec as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that you all do a fantastic job. I, I sometimes think of you kind of like, it's, I know the title is Parks and Recreation, but you seem to be the department that provides the most care for our constituents, right? So you've, you've been there and stepped in, especially around food assistance and food distribution through this last long year and a half. And I just want to make sure that you know that we, you have all of our love and respect. So thank you for all the work that you do. I don't have any other, um, comments right now. I do hope that Councilwoman Smith gets to join us, um, Mr. Chair, but I'll stop there. Thank you, Ms. Vargas.
Thank you. Any other members for discussion? Seeing none, do you want to make a motion to hold?
Sure, my absolutely. Thank you. Motion to hold one week.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to our invoices. We need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Now need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Mr. O'Connor. One supplemental paper, Bill sixteen-forty.
Bill sixteen-forty Resolution amending resolution four twelve entitled Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant grant agreements to receive funding from the Allegheny County Health Department to develop a public health inform diversion program and further providing for expenditures under the terms of said agreement to increase the amount authorized by the grant agreement or agreements and the amount authorized for expenditures.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Um, number of new papers, the first being Bill fifteen-ninety-seven.
Bill fifteen-ninety-seven Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's multi-module transportation program to provide funding for the construction of the Davis Avenue pedestrian bridge and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve. Do you second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fifteen-ninety-eight.
Bill fifteen-ninety-eight Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's multi-module transportation program for sidewalk improvements to Irvine Street in the Hazelwood neighborhood and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fifteen-ninety-nine.
Bill fifteen-ninety-nine Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of independent enterprises, Inc. in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for restoration work on McGee Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-hundred.
Bill sixteen-hundred Resolution granting unto Mary Tomio, et cetera, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to replace an existing entrance ramp with a new ADA compliant entrance ramp and landing at forty fifty-five Liberty Avenue, the ninth ward, Southern Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-oh-two.
Bill sixteen-oh-two Resolution granting unto Northside Associates their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to reconstruct a set of existing entry steps for a group of townhouses at ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-two Strawn Street in the twenty-fifth ward and at twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, and thirty Strawn Street, the twenty-sixth ward, sixth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-oh-three.
Bill sixteen-oh-three Resolution granting unto Magnite Bank Tower LLC. Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install two new projecting signs unto an existing building at three oh seven Fourth Avenue in the first ward, sixth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-oh-four.
Bill sixteen-oh-four Resolution granting unto R H R L E Fourth Avenue LLC. Their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new projecting sign unto an existing building at two PPG Place, fifth ward, first council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-oh-four?
Sixteen-oh-five.
Sixteen-oh-five, excuse me.
Sixteen-oh-five Resolution authorizing the city to enter into a preservation agreement with the Children's Museum of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-oh-six.
Sixteen-oh-six Resolution further amending resolution of a four ninety-two, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city and the Renaissance Three Architects for the professional architecture services for Robert E. Williams' community building reconstruction and design documents at a cost not to exceed three hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars and eight cents for professional services by increasing the total allocation to eighty-three thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. First new paper, Bill sixteen-twelve.
Bill sixteen-twelve Resolution providing for the designation as historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the East Liberty Mellon Bank located at sixty-one twelve Penn Avenue in East Liberty, eighth ward of the city. The owner's agent is opposed to the nomination.
Motion to hold for public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It will be held for a cable cast public hearing. Bill sixteen-thirteen.
Bill sixteen-thirteen Ordinance accepting a new street name by Mary Peck Bond Place in the twelfth ward as per recommendation by the city addressing committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in June twenty-twenty-one. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-fourteen.
Bill sixteen-fourteen Ordinance accepting the name change of a portion of University Drive A and University Drive B to a new street name, Damon Drive, and accepted the name change of a portion of University Drive C and a portion of University Drive A to a new street name, Utterback Drive, in the fourth ward of the city as per recommendation by the city's addressing committee. The following street names were approved by CPAC in May of twenty-twenty-one. The names listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-fifteen.
Bill sixteen-fifteen Ordinance, Ordinance accepting a new street name, Bell Tower Lane in the ninth ward as per recommendation by the CPAC. The following street name was approved in May of twenty-twenty-one. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter four twenty Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to our Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess, uh, wonder, first deferred paper, Bill fourteen-sixty-five.
Bill fourteen-sixty-five Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter one seventy-three of the code the naming of a public fountain located at the northeastern corner of Allegheny Commons as the Patricia Reagan Rooney Memorial Fountain.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fifteen-eighty-six.
Bill fifteen-eighty-six Ordinance amending and supplementing the city code at Title IV Public Places and Property, Article eleven Parks and Playground, Chapter four seventy-seven, Permits and Fees, Section four seventy-seven oh one, Park Permit Procedures, Section four seventy-seven oh two, Fees for Swimming Boos, Golf Courts, Skating Rinks, and Other Recreational Facilities, so as to give priority to city residents for park facility rentals.
Motion to approve.
Uh, second, very brief discussion.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I believe it may be the will of the sponsors to actually hold one week. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Um, Kraus. I was trying to reach Councilwoman Smith, who's been spearheading the conversations, but I do, I would think it's, um, fair to just hold one more week.
Okay, thank you.
From her, so sorry.
Thanks, thanks, Councilwoman Gross. Uh, motion to hold one week, please.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held one week. That takes us to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilman Strasburger. First, new papers, Bill fifteen-eighty-seven.
Bill fifteen-eighty-seven Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution five thirty-nine entitled Resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and/or director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract with Granite Kids, Inc. for software upgrades, serving hosting services, and annual maintenance of Legisstore, agenda management, and video streaming, in order to extend the contract in additional twelve months for an additional cost of fifty-eight thousand, thirty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-oh-nine?
Bill sixteen-oh-nine Resolution amending resolution number three ninety-two, which authorized the city to extend a professional services agreement with STR Grants LLC for software services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by a term of one year at an additional cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-ten.
Bill sixteen-ten Resolution amending resolution four seventy-five, which provided for a professional services agreement with NCR Corporation to provide citywide credit debit and e-check payment services for the collection of various programs and permitting fees for the city by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for three additional years at no additional cost.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill sixteen-eleven.
Bill sixteen-eleven Resolution providing for the mayor and acting director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement with Root Smart Technologies, Inc., which provides trash and recycling routing optimization for one, a software update subscription to Root Smart Software, including a maintenance fee covering troubleshooting and technical assistance at an annual cost not to exceed seven thousand dollars, total not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars for initial contract year with three renewal option years and two in-user training on the best use of Root Smart Software, a seven-day course to be delivered remotely at a cost not to exceed ten thousand, five hundred dollars for twenty-twenty-one only.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Councilwoman.
So I know this isn't our biggest, um, spending bill, um, but I did want to, you know, I just, I, this is the conversation we've had um, a little bit on, uh, snowplow side, and I wanted to just see if, um, Deputy Director, um, Newman was here at the table or someone else to speak to this event. Thank you for joining us today. Um, and I wanted to see if you can speak to, um, you know, this technology and how it's going so far with, um, creating a more efficient, um, more efficient routes or saving us time and money, resources, whatever it might be, when it comes to our environmental services routes. Just curious if, if you could, you know, tell the council how it's been going and, and what, and what this does after the future.
Uh, sure. Good morning. Um, my name is Marcel Newman, uh, Assistant Director in Public Works. Um, so this, we've been using this technology for the past ten years. However, we need to, um, train some new folks. We've had some folks that have been really good experts at it, but have moved on to other jobs in other cities. Um, but we, we have some new folks on right now and we would like to extend the training to them. Uh, and not only train our folks in environmental services, but also in IMP so that we can ensure continuity, uh, of knowledge of this program. So we're, we're asking for, uh, ten thousand dollars for the training uh, that will be done remotely for next year and then, um, seven thousand dollars annually for the license to use Route Smart. Uh, it helps greatly, um, with our, um, connectivity to, you know, household-to-household routing for environmental services and, uh, for recycling.
Thank you. And I, I realized I, I, uh, did not get, catch your title right. So it was, uh, your Assistant Director, not Deputy Director. My apologies. Um, I don't have any further questions. I just wanted everyone to hear, because I know this is a hot button issue on the other services and, uh, everyone to hear what this was for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Chair, opposed to sixteen-eleven. One opposition, bill receives affirmative recommendation. Thank you. Uh, last committee of the day is Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. One new paper, Bill sixteen-oh-seven.
Bill sixteen-oh-seven Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official school facility plan for Gladstone Residence at three twenty-seven Hazelwood Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That moves us to our meeting announcements, and we have a number of them. This afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold a cable cast, put in a discussion on the academic achievement of students with activists and advocates and community stakeholders to discuss current achievement data related to Bill two thousand and twenty-one dash eleven thirty-five, a resolution declaring a state of educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh. Excuse me. Council will meet next Tuesday and Wednesday, June twenty-ninth and thirtieth at ten AM for our regular and standing committee meetings respectively. To register for next week's council meetings, fill out the signup form on council meeting webpage by nine AM Tuesday and Wednesday for regular standing committee meetings. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Also, next week, council will hold two cable cast public hearings as follows. Tuesday, June twenty-ninth at one PM on Bill fifteen-sixty-two as it relates to a resolution providing for the continued designation of a downtown Pittsburgh Business Improvement District. And then on Wednesday, June thirtieth at one-thirty PM on Bill eleven-thirty-five relative to a resolution declaring a state of educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh. To register for these public hearings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage by eleven AM Tuesday and eleven-thirty AM Wednesday. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Also, city residents and stakeholders are invited to share their input on the city's two thousand and twenty-two operating budget by taking a survey either online at www dot engage dot Pittsburgh PA dot gov backslash two thousand and twenty-two budgets or by calling three one one. The two thousand and twenty-two operating budget survey is open now. The two thousand twenty-two operating budget survey is open now through July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Are there any further announcements by members?
I'd just like to register and I vote for that, Ms. Councilwoman.
Thank you. If if nothing else, we need a motion to approve the absent member, approve the minutes in adjournment.
Removed.
All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned.